All right, I'd like to call the August 19th, 2019, meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education to order. First up is to approve our minutes from the July 15th meeting. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Sub move.
Yep.
Sub move.
Okay, great, thank you. All those in favor? Great, thanks. Next up is to review and approve the agenda and the motion. Great, thanks Penny. And Deanna, all those in favor? Great, thanks. Next is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard? If you could just state your name, it would be great.
Hi, I'm Krista Nielsen. I'm a mom of two kids that attend East Elementary School, who actually are here in the audience with me tonight, for lack of childcare. I sent you all an email on August 6th outlining my concerns about the proposal to start elementary school start times at 7:45. Since you've already heard from me, I'm not going to read that to you again. I'm sure you've all had a chance to read it. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of my husband, who wanted to attend but also works in New York City because of his commute, can't be here for a 7:00 PM meeting, which means he also won't be able to be home for a 7:00 PM bedtime for my children, which would be required for them to be up and ready for school by 7:45 in the morning. And that means he probably wouldn't see his kids Monday through Friday, which is an unfortunate side effect of the current proposal. And I have to believe that we're not the only family like this in New Canaan. I mean, this is a commuter town. I have no idea what the statistics are, but I imagine a lot of school-aged children have parents, or at least one parent, that commutes to New York City. So I feel like I'm speaking on more than just my behalf, but on behalf of other people as well, who have the same issue in their household. And I just also wanted to clarify, the third reason I'm here is because I wanted to clarify something that I wasn't sure shown through in my email as well as I wanted it to, which is I am completely in favor of starting high school later. So I don't want this to turn into an either-or conversation, and I don't want you guys to feel like you have to throw up your hands that it's elementary school versus high school. That's not my intent at all. I'm hoping that, you know, we're able to come to a solution that works for all the grade levels and all the families in this town. So I know you're down to two options, but I urge you to maybe take another look at what you're doing with the elementary schools and see if there's any other way to make this proposal work. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, thank you. Next is reports and recognition. First up is Mr. Sneeth with the K-12 VPA update.
I hope everybody has enjoyed their summer with their family and friends. As you're aware, I'm here tonight to provide an update on the work that the visual and performing arts teachers have done with the board goal number eight. Typically when I'm up here, you will see me showing a lot of photographs of student work and slides and videos, and I'm up here talking about accolades that the students have received over the year. I've been up here to, with the teachers, to see if we can get approval to go to Disneyland or Disney World for competition. That, or those presentations basically are the culmination of the work that they've done throughout the school year. Tonight's presentation is at the very beginning of what the work is. Over the past year, we've been taking a look at the Common Core standards and seeing how that they work with our curriculum. So that being said, there's not going to be a lot of videos or slides, it's just me. So, here we go. So, the board goal A, as you're aware, basically is taking a look at the Common Core art standards. And taking a look at them, doing a deep dig with them, and then establishing a timeline for how the teachers can move forward with the work. Part of the goal two is writing Understanding by Design units, a study for the teachers to implement in the classrooms. And the final part of the goal is to look at our current staffing, to see how the teachers are doing with the current curriculum, seeing if there's anything that we need to change as we're moving forward with the curriculum as we write it. And then the last part of the board goal is to take a look at the common practices going on in our classrooms with our teachers, identifying best practices, putting those into a document, and then as we roll out the new curriculum, to really make sure that we have those experiences for our teachers and our students. So the first thing that, the first thing that we did last year at the start of 2018 and 19, we had a professional learning day with our teachers. And during that time, I shared with them the new board goal. We talked about it, we had discussions, what are the implications, what does the work look like, what is the timeline, what do we need to do for the teachers, what do they need? The next step was looking at our philosophy that was in place. The last curriculum was written almost 16 years ago. So what we did is, we looked to see who was still around. There were only six teachers that wrote the former curriculum. So that being said, there are 15 teachers now on staff that have been hired since I've been on board. Fifteen out of 28 are new teachers. So the most important thing that we needed to do was get the teachers together and have conversations about our shared values and beliefs. What should be happening in our classrooms? What should our kids look like when they're in middle school and high school? How do kids travel between the strands? So during the meeting, it was really chaotic, because we had these conversations, and the conversations started with the strands. We had the music teachers on one side of the room, the art teachers on the other side of the room. And then we broke off to elementary, middle school, and high school. We had the conversations vertically, and then we bounced them off between art and music teachers. We put up the smartboard, and we came together, and this is the result of a few heated conversations. But as you can see, this new mission statement really, this really makes us think about what we need to do as educators to create students that can, that can come up with their own personal artistic voice. Which is very important, because we want the students, when they graduate, to know who they are, and we want for them to be able to communicate who they are, whether it's through a piece of art, through a piece of music, or even up on the stage. So the timeline for the school year is kind of short. We reviewed the current standards that we have in place, and then we took a crosswalk with the new Common Core standards and the four artistic processes. After that, I had to find some staff that were available to be trained on Understanding by Design. That's the format that all of our UNICEF study are grounded in. And then we trained the teachers with the Understanding by Design, the concept. And then I let them go, and they started writing UNICEF study that you'll see in a minute, represent K-12 work in both art and music. So before I share those with you, I wanted to just briefly discuss some of the challenges of the work, because the current music standards were written in 1994, and they are skills-based. Standards one through three basically had students performing, they were singing or performing on an instrument, or they were improvising music. Standards, sorry, four and five were the comprehension, the composing, and the music theory, which is kind of the foundation of the music. Seven, six and seven were listening, analyzing, describing music, and evaluating performances. And eight and nine standards were basically the integration of music into core academic areas, and also the historical and cultural connections. When you're looking at this, you have to think, this, these were written in 1994. All of our music teachers have been living this, whether they've been teaching for several years, or even if they were in high school, middle school, or college. These are the standards, the skills-based standards that they've been living with. So there's got to be a little, there has to be a little bit of a paradigm shift to move into concept standards. So we took this document, and then we, in a minute you'll see, we compared it with the new Common Core standards. The art standards are very similar. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go over them, but they're very base, very similar to the, to the music standards. I'll just give you one little second to, to kind of take a look before I move forward. So what has happened, the committee that created the new Common Core art standards, they created four pockets. They created music, art, dance, and theater. The music pocket has five strands, general music, composition theory, music technology, guitar, keyboard harmonizing instruments, and ensembles for choir instruments, et cetera. The visual arts are, you can break those down into painting, drawing, ceramics, jewelry, three-dimensional, and then the media arts include introduct, sorry, digital photography, video, and film. We're not dealing with the theater and dance at this point in time, but these are the new core, Common Core standards. And what's different, though, moving forward, is these content standards now flow into four artistic processes. Hopefully it will slide. Creating, performing, presenting, producing, responding, and connecting. These artistic processes are not new. If you walk through our classrooms, you would see the students doing this with their teachers on a daily basis. What is different is how the new anchor standards align with each of the artistic processes. There are 11 of the standards, and I think what's really important to know that they're concepts-based, and also these, these 11 standards, they are applicable to all four areas, art, music, dance, and theater. So no longer do we have a separate music standard, and art standard, and theater. These generate across all of those four content areas. So by the time a student leaves our New Canaan public schools, they should be able to demonstrate what they've learned through their education in the arts. I know this is kind of dry, so we're going to get into a little bit more interesting things right now, because I wanted to show you some of the, what?
Are you excited?
I'm going to bring in, I'm going to bring in a flash mob.
My family.
No, I'm just joking. Yeah. So when you're looking at this document, this is what the elementary music teachers came up with. This is a template that they're using as they move forward with the UBD units. This template here, if you're looking on the left-hand side of the page, these are the anchor standards, followed with the enduring understandings and the essential questions. And then on the right-hand side, at the very top box, you see the skill objectives. And just to give you a little bit of flavor of what it is, the very top box has students creating music. This is a creating aspect. They're creating music for recorder using a set of given pitches and rhythms. That's just a creating process, a creative process. The second skill objective in the middle box, students are starting to take what they've learned, and they're starting to compose pieces for recorder. So they're, they're adding quarter notes and half notes, eighth notes, they're using multiple meter, and they're starting to use different pitches, G, A, B, C, D, for those people that really understand music, and they're notating on music. So at the end of that unit, students will come up, and they will have a piece of music that they can play on their recorder. The bottom box are the skill objectives, and this is what's interesting, because this is where the students take what they wrote, they take a deep look at it, they evaluate it, sometimes they'll share it with their friends, their friends will perform it, give them feedback, and at the end of this particular piece, the students will have a piece that they can have performed. Now, as a sidebar, last year at South Elementary, I saw this when I was doing an observation. We actually, I walked into the classroom, and students were paired up throughout the classroom, and they were playing for each other, and we had a set of prompts that talked, or asked questions of the person that wrote it, and the, you know, the student that was listening would ask prompts. For instance, do you have four beats in every measure? What pitches did you use? What kind of a mood or feeling were you trying to reflect when you wrote this piece? So the students are already getting used to this kind of work, so moving forward, I think they're going to be really set to do this. This template is what the teachers use as a foundation. They will take this now, and then as they move forward, this will be the foundation or the important piece as they write the Understanding by Design unit for the recorder for fourth grade. One important thing to know, that on the left-hand column, this only represents the artistic process of creating. As they move forward, there'll be one for performing, one for connecting, and one responding. On the next slide, I just wanted to show you a little bit of what the art teachers have done at the elementary level. It's very similar, however, the art teachers, after a lot of conversations, decided that when they write the units of study, they really needed to focus on the media. So instead of doing, like, fourth grade recorder, they have lessons that they're going to design in painting, in drawing, ceramics, three-dimensional, and sculpture. If you look at this document, this has all the basic elements of what they are going to need for the UBD unit. They have the creating, presenting, responding, connecting in the left-hand column. They have the skill objectives, the support performance assessments, enduring understandings, and historical connections in the middle column. And as a sidebar, as we're going through this with the art teachers, we're updating our art, our art icons. We're making sure that we have all cultures and all genders represented in this. So you will see Frida Kahlo, you'll see Keith Haring, whoever. So there's going to be a really diverse group of art icons. And then on the right side, you see the materials, vocabulary, and essential questions. Once again, this is what the elementary art teachers are going to use, or are using as they move forward. This is a drawing unit, and also, just to let you know, drawing doesn't just represent one activity. They can be drawing self-portraits, they can be drawing horizon, the foreground, middle ground, background. And in a minute, I'll show you an example of a drawing that has texture in it. So the last example I wanted to share with you, this is an example of how the middle school art teachers started their work. As you can see, every individual group has their own way that they work. This information here is very similar to what the elementary teachers did. This has all the same knowledge that was in that, it's just a different graphic design that they, or graphic designer that they used. It has, you know, the performing, or performing, presenting, et cetera, et cetera. So that being said, what I wanted to do is show you how this really takes place in an art classroom. But before I do, I wanted to emphasize that our music teachers and art teachers don't just randomly have the kids sing or, you know, create self-portraits. Everything that they do with the students is driven, and everything is connected. So when you walk by and you see elementary kindergarten kids drawing self-portraits, they're not just drawing a face. They're learning proportion, they're learning how to add detail, such as an eye, a nose, an ear. As they progress to fourth grade, you're going to see them adding texture, you're going to see them adding color, mood, and feeling. When you're walking around a music class and you see students skipping, they're not just skipping because they're happy, I mean, hopefully they're happy, but they're skipping because they're learning how to keep a steady beat. In music, you have to have a steady beat in order to have rhythm. Once you know how to keep a steady beat, you can learn how to clap quarter notes, and eighth notes, and half notes. Then you can understand how that you divide those into meter and have two-four, three-four, or four-four. So when you're going around, I think it's important to think, wow, I wonder what those kids are really learning in there. So this particular slide shows you what is going on in a third-grade art classroom. This was a, an observation, and it's a drawing unit, so when you're looking at it, the teacher is teaching the students how to create a castle using shapes. Basically, that's what they want to do. You're going to make a castle shapes, that's the first part of the lesson. The second part of the lesson is how to add texture, how to add detail into the castle, you know? And if you look up here, it says, what is the artist trying to express? A drawing begins with basic shapes, texture and detail are then added, and then the final piece of that lesson is adding mood or feeling. If you were to walk into that classroom, you would see the teacher talking to the students about feeling. How do they feel today? What are kinds of feelings that you have? And how can you use art to represent those feelings? So I'm going to fast-forward, and I'm going to show you, these are some of the artwork that was done as a result of the class. When you're looking at this, you see four different castles, you see the shapes, you see the triangles, you see the rectangles, you can see the detail in the work through the texture, and then some of them, you can actually see, you know, capture the feeling in each piece. What I love about this most, and this goes back to our mission statement, each one of these students is sharing his or her own artistic self. They're communicating through their work about what they think a castle looks like, as well as the feelings that go along with it. So, before I move, I thought I would stop to see if there are any questions, because the next part's another part of the presentation.
Any questions? Deanna?
So, I don't know if this will be covered later or not, but, so with these various units and the, and the, and the various content areas that you're developing, do they also coordinate with the other departments as far as, you know, like, if you're studying the Revolutionary War, will you, in the art, be looking at art of that period, and, you know, if you could talk to that?
Yes, we're not quite there yet, but only where it's organic to what the lesson is concerned with. You know, if you think about all the different art historical periods, most of them already align with what's hap, what has happened during the world, and same with the music. At the elementary level, basically, there's a lot, there are a lot of connections with the most social and emotional learning. I previously talked about mood and feeling. We're hoping that the art icons will help make connections to some of the other things with the interdisciplinary connections. You know, if you think about, like, right now at West and, West and South, they do a second-grade program that talks about Connecticut, which is part of their social studies unit. So the music teachers teach the students songs about Connecticut rivers, Connecticut histories. So that's the eventual goal, and if you look, when you get to the UBD form, if you look on it, there is a place for those interdisciplinary connections.
And do you have a timeline for when you might be able to sort of see those interdisciplinary connections sort of being implemented, or, or at least, at least have a plan for when that might be?
I don't have a target date yet.
Okay.
You know, right now, we're just in the process, Deanna. And I'll, when I show you the next slide, you can see how cumbersome this is.
Yeah.
But the goal is, once we have those units in place, we will take it to the CLC, where those members will take a look at it, and they'll provide their input on what else should be added, or, or taken out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, great, thanks.
So this slide here, this represents the work that is in progress. The top two columns represent visual art, UBD units, and the bottom, sorry, the top two rows, and the bottom row represents the art, sorry, the music units that have been started. If you, it's, it's huge. It's, you know, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of training. This is not just a one-year board goal, I hope. It's going to take, you know, a lot of time to get this done, and then take it to the CLC. But I can tell you that all of these units have been started. It's, it's interesting, at the elementary level and part of the middle school level, it's, it's kind of lower level, it's like this, you're learning the skills, you're learning the, the content information. When you get to the high school, it's all application and synthesis, and really producing the work. So it's just interesting to look at these. You can see there's a wide range of experiences that our students are having. This is not, this will be a living document, because as times change, there will be more units. I anticipate units on integration of technology into the art room and into the music room. It's just a lot of work. So, that being said, where are we going with this? You know, in the fall, I'll continue training staff with you, Understanding by Design. As I said before, we have a lot of art teachers that have been trained. Now I will work with the music teachers. We'll continue to write the units. Then I want to sit down K-12 and make sure that they're vertically aligned and there are no gaps, and then eliminate any redundancies. We'll present it to the CLC. Two of the most important things that we do here, and this is not new, but I wanted to articulate it, is we will continue peer-to-peer observations. The last two years, I am, I've required the art and music teachers to go into other art and music teachers in our district. If they're middle school, I require them to go to the elementary and high school to see what those art teachers are doing, to see what's being, what's taking place in the classroom, to look at the student work. Similarly, I have the elementary teachers going to all three elementary schools. I do the same on the music side. Those peer-to-peer observations are so worthwhile, because the teachers actually see the work in progress. So as we get these units in place, as we test them, we'll be going in and really giving each other feedback on what, how it's working, and any changes that we need to be made. The other thing that we have done in the past that we will resurrect is videotape lessons. We did this four or five years ago, after the Tepel document came out. Videotaped a couple teachers with their students, a whole 30 or 45-minute lesson, and then we sat down as a group of music teachers and art teachers. We took the framework out, and we looked at different parts of their teaching, whether it be questioning, whether it be student engagement, whether or not the essential question was articulated. We will continue to do that with the teachers, but this time, instead of looking at the Tepel document, we will take out the Understanding by Design document, making sure the essential questions are well-articulated. Do the students understand what they're supposed to be doing? Are the enduring understandings in place? And then also, what we'll do is, at the very end of that culminating unit, we'll take a look at all the student art, or the student music, and we will calibrate, and we will, to see, you know, and we'll assess it, to see what they've done. So that's basically it. I mean, it's kind of short and quick. It's an update. I can come back to you sometime when we have, like, seven hours, and I'll go through more, more, you know, more parts of the UNICEF study. But at first, it was a bit overwhelming, but to be honest with you, we have some wonderful teachers that take this very seriously, and they want the best for the students. And I think when you go through the school halls, when you're in south, east, and west, when you're at Saks, you know, here at the high school, the student work is outstanding. And the final piece is, in the next two or three years, I want to be able to go through those halls, and I don't want to see two pieces of art that are alike. I want to see every student expressing his or her own, his or her own voice. I want to go to the music tech lab, and I want to listen to different compositions. I want to hear individual compositions. And then, when I do that, I'll know that the work has been done. So.
That's great, thank you. Any questions? Penny?
Not really a question, but just a comment. What I love about this is how you're having every student own their own musical or creative expression, which is a little bit different than my education. And I think it's fantastic, and I think it's just going to build confidence and abilities and, you know, talent in our kids. And so, thank you. It's a huge undertaking to create this curriculum, but I think it'll all come together, and I appreciate your passion for it.
Thanks.
Katrina?
I completely agree with Penny, and I just, I love the mission statement. I think as a parent, it really resonates with me, and I would guess that most, if not all, parents would have the same, similar goal for, for each of their own students and children. My question is just, how does, so I know you mentioned theater. Is that purely extracurricular, or, so there's, it's not part of Common Core, and it's addressed separately?
As, as the current way that it's been presented, it's co-curricular.
Yeah.
You know, eventually, Saks will be going to, hopefully in a couple of years, be going to some student electives, and at that point, we can integrate it into the curriculum strand.
Okay.
By the way, we have some really good shows coming up this year. Frozen, Frozen Junior for the fifth and sixth grade, and Beauty and the Beast for the seventh and eighth grade.
Nice.
That's a teaser, I'm not going to tell the high school ones yet, because we don't have the rights.
Other questions? Deanna?
I also don't have a question, I just wanted to, one, tell you that, one, your presentations aren't boring, even though you can't sing and dance for us. And two, I wanted to just let you know that we all so appreciate the work that your department is doing. I mean, you know, for those of us who've been really focused on the STEM, anybody who's paying any attention, there's an A in that most of the time, and arts is part of it. And that is sort of what's going to be driving, you know, us moving forward. So what you are doing, and what your department is doing, is really important. And finally, I just wanted to say, as someone whose kids benefited, and are continuing to utilize the skills they've developed here, the, the staff that you have has been fantastic in helping to shape these kids, and, you know, prepare them to take their creative, artistic, whatever it be, into, into the future. So if you could communicate that to your staff, that would be great.
Well, thank you. I have just one quick comment, if you don't mind.
Sure.
You know, when I was a young English teacher, I heard a quote that resonated with me, and it was, "Good schools teach students to analyze poetry, great students, uh, great schools teach students to write poetry." And simply put, you and your department, and all of the ownership and pride you engender in our students as they do their, their work, help us to be a great school, and a great school system. So, thank you, thank you.
Thanks. I, I echo all of that. I just had a couple of, do you have a question, Jen, or comment?
I have one too.
Okay, good. So, it would be great if you could just talk to us a little bit about how the arts sort of integrate or assist what we're doing in the STEM side. Just, you know, I personally have less. Just, you know, I personally have less experience with that, so it'd be great if we could just understand that a little bit.
I can give a, a few examples off the top of my head. I know at Saks, some of the students were doing some 3D printing. And so Vivian Birdsall worked with the art teachers and the teachers worked with the students on creating their original design in 2D. So once the students had created the design in 2D, then they went on to Ms. Birdsall, who actually found a way to turn it into 3D and then they actually printed that. So if you go through her room, you're gonna see some really interesting pieces of 3D work. Very, very creative. We're, we're starting to do some blue screen things coming up, um, working with Vivian, where students will be videotaping on a background of a green screen. I don't know how that's gonna move forward. Um, it's kind of hard on the spot, but I can, I can, I can share, I can send an email and share those with you.
Yeah, that's understandable.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. And then, um, I just had a question on participation in clubs and after-school activities. I imagine a lot of, you know, if you look through the, the various areas of study and courses, um, there's a lot that's done after school or before school. So can you just talk a little bit about, you know, the teachers that are, you know, running clubs or, um, you know, participation in, in after-school performing arts, those sorts of things? Just whether we're still seeing, you know, a lot of, a lot of students interested in those programs?
It's, it's, um, it's based upon teachers because some of the teachers have outside things going on. But, um, for instance, East Elementary, they do East School Singers before school where students in, um, third and fourth grade, they audition and they come and work with Mr. Zhao. Um, at the middle school, there are different art clubs that work with Ms. Bennett. Also, we have challenges in art. Mr. Coulter does a group with band students. Ms. Rosen does after-school activities, just helping kids keep up. Uh, you know, the big thing at Saks are the musicals. Last year, we had over a hundred students participating in the Five Six Musical, around eighty with the Seventh and Eighth Grade Musical. I assume that it's gonna be considerably more this year because of what the shows are. Um, and as a matter of fact, we, sidebar, we added a third performance of Beauty and the Beast. Typically, we do two shows for the eighth grade. We have added another one just because we anticipate there'll be a lot of students showing up. At the high school, we have a film club. Ms. Cinski works with students that are interested, not only her students, but they meet on every Wednesday. They come in, they work with her, um, and they look at films. They have Film Night, um, where they analyze different films. And part of their responsibility is to organize and present the Film Festival, um, here in the Wagner Room in May. This year, I think it's going to be the fourth or fifth year that they've done it. If you have not attended or, I, I urge you at least to look at the link because these films are amazing. Students are taking drones, they're using the cameras on the drones and these, the films are amazing. Last year, we had a participation from, um, I would say twenty schools throughout Fairfield County. Ms. McDonough does an art club as well at the high school. That's kind of what I can remember right now, but.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
We're getting there, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Deanna?
I just have one more question. Um, and it's just something that may exist and I don't realize it. Do we, at this time, have a jazz band at the high school?
Yes.
We do. Okay. Okay. And that's, great.
Penny?
So during the Saks Building Committee, we talked some about the ability to do public speaking when auditorium was back in use. And I was just channeling Molly from that committee. So I thought I'd ask, what, if anything, you were doing, it might be more a question for Brian, it might be a different curricular area, but since you're here and we're on the committee, I thought I'd get an update.
We're, we're, we're trying to get plans in place. My goal is to work with Melinda Meyer, Science Coordinator, and, um, you know, I don't know what the project is called, but the stu- Shark, not Shark Tank.
Shark Tank.
Um, to work with them and then hopefully maybe they can go in and do a similar Shark Tank TED Talk. One thing that, um, we have a new auditorium manager, thank you very much, Zach Whitlock. And one thing that he's doing is he's learning how to do, um, how to, to, uh, similar to the high school, we can broadcast concerts from the high school. We're trying to figure out how to do that from Saks. We know the capabilities are there, we just have to learn how to do it. So, you know, when we get to the point where students are doing this kind of thing, we can, um, give the parents or their grandparents or friends across the United States a password and a code where they can go in and they can watch it or watch a videotape of it.
Terrific. That's great. All right. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next is our enrollment update with Ms. Bianca.
Good evening. It's been about a month since we have last spoken about our projected enrollment and some new things to tell you. You see in front of you the, um, the enrollment, projected enrollment sheets for the elementary level and then one for total. And what I wanted to briefly highlight for you is that, um, in terms of East School, you see that on the kindergarten level, we had gone up one section, uh, from our last conversation. However, the total enrollment number remained the same at 556 between, uh, last month and this. At South School, uh, our total enrollment figure is 542. And last we spoke, it was 528. The differences there are in terms of the kindergarten numbers, which were at 113 the last time we spoke and are currently at 119. Uh, our first grade has stayed the same. Our second grade numbers have gone up by two to a total of 114. And our third grade numbers have gone from 110 to 115. And our fourth grade number at South is at 113 and had previously been at 112. So we are looking at a difference between 542 and 528, a difference of fourteen from our last conversation. West School is, uh, the last we spoke was at 419. It's currently at 424. The differences were one student, uh, let's see, two students on the first grade level and five students on the fourth grade level. So we went from ninety-five to, uh, one hundred for a total of 424. And when last we spoke, we were at 419, uh, which brings our total elementary enrollment to fifteen hundred and twenty-two students. Uh, that is, that's without the pre-K. If you look over to the total sheet, you will notice that Saks Middle School, our projected enrollment in total previously had been at thirteen oh nine and we are currently, as of this Friday, at thirteen twenty-eight. So that is, I'm sorry, I'm reading the high school. We were, uh, we're at thirteen thirty and our NESDEC projection was at thirteen twelve. So that is a difference of eighteen students. And the high school numbers are at thirteen twenty-eight and our NESDEC projection was thirteen oh nine. And that's a difference of nineteen students. So the general trend is that, uh, the numbers are up on both the, um, middle school and high school level, which brings us to a total of forty-one eighty. And the NESDEC projected enrollment was four thousand sixty-four students, which is a difference of a hundred and sixteen students.
Big numbers.
Big numbers.
Yeah.
You know, I do want to just update because, um, the first grade at East has broken to six sections now. So it's saying five sections?
No, it says six.
It has six.
No, first grade is at five here. It is six.
Yeah.
Eighteen, nineteen was at five.
Okay.
And then nineteen, twenty is at six.
Oh, I don't have your, the update. I only have the one sheet. Sorry about that.
First grade though, that's first grade.
First grade.
You trying, fourth grade has six sections?
Yeah, first grade at East.
I thought you were trying kindergarten.
First grade at East is actually six sections now. So we were over those guidelines, um, and so we had to make a decision. So first grade at East is actually six sections. So we're up one section at East, making it twenty-eight sections.
Okay.
And that brought it down to, I think it's about seventeen point eight or eighteen as an average.
So the total number of sections now, um, year to year is the same seventy-seven.
Exactly.
But we had projected to go down, right, two sections?
Three.
Three sections.
Right.
Right. So it's three additional full elementary classes relative to what we expected.
And everything, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was only gonna say, if you look across the, um, you know, the class sizes themselves and the horizontal sheet, you see everything with few exceptions is nineteen or, you know, right at the twenty. We've really tried to be, we're always as careful as we can possibly be. But it's really tight. You know, there are a lot of kids in these schools with, uh, in the number of classes that we have. And they are running at those. You know, there's no six, no sixteens and only the one seventeen is going to be at the first grade over at East. You know, everything else is, uh, a couple of eighteens and then almost all nineteen and twenty. So.
Shows that there's clearly demand for the New Canaan Public Schools.
I think that's it.
Yeah. Uh, any questions? Deanna?
So I don't know if you've had an opportunity yet to take a look at it, but, um, it, it looks like we're, uh, uh, getting a lot of movement at, um, South, particularly at, well, and West too. And so I don't know if, in working with, you know, the registrar, if we're kind of understanding, you know, are we getting a lot of homes, new home sales? Or are, how, where are people coming from? Are they moving out of the city? Are they transferring districts? Do we, do we have a sense?
That, we've listed out some questions for our district registrar to, to take a look at. Right now, she's right in the throes of the meetings and the registration and making sure it's all right. So those, I think those questions will be a part of our, uh, report out in October, after we do our.
Yep.
You know, our enrollment reports and projections and those things. Because it's, it is important to talk about, you know, what are the trends? You know, and is it owner, homeownership? There's some questions around rentals up or down or whatever else, like sort of how can we understand this best? And so we want to be data-driven in that conversation. We'll be able to do that then.
Okay.
Yep.
Katrina?
Are there any, it looks like maybe South, are there any situations where we're really close to even going up again, South maybe?
At this point, we had to make a decision. So we made our decision last Monday. So if school was to start last Monday, this is what we were gonna move forward with. Um, I do have to say that the numbers are changing daily. So we might be gaining a student, we might be losing a student, but, you know, you get to that point where you have to make a decision because we have to finish scheduling and we have to fit, finish placement and, um, you know, new teacher orientation begins tomorrow. So you, you have to make a time where you just have to cut it off at this point. And then certainly, if we have classes that continue to go over guidelines, then we'll have to figure out extra supports that we can help to provide to those classrooms. But, so school is to start tomorrow. This is where we're gonna stand with our number of sections at each of the buildings. And then we'll go from there.
You know, when they run as high as they do and we try, we do as tightly as we are, one of the challenges has to do not just with folks moving into the district, but people moving from one elementary district to another. You know, as the home market does what it does, the people are moving from, say, west to east, east to west, back and forth. And so there, there can be a drop in one and increase in another and that, that makes a difference too. And those continue to come in even as late as today. We had another conversation with a, a family that was looking to move from one district to another. So lots of.
It's a tough job.
Yeah. It's all right. It's all signs of a healthy, uh, school district.
Definitely. Yeah, this is great news. Um, I mean, seeing a hundred and sixteen students overall greater than what we predicted is, uh, is pretty amazing. Remarkable.
And we just have to talk to our demographer and figure out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we're one sixteen above our projections.
How much do we pay him?
Do we know if the forty-one eighty is the highest?
It's the kindergarten.
Do you, do you know, over the last five years, ten years?
I don't think so. We'll take a look. But, uh, you know, we do still have a couple of smaller grades, the, the first grade at two sixty-four and some others, but we'll.
Chart it out.
We are, we're up twenty-one students.
Pretty close, if not the top, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-one from last year.
Right.
And so, you know, just straight year to year as we compare it. And there's still time for some movement. You know, the final numbers may be up a little, maybe down a little bit.
Right.
You know, these, the numbers are always a moving target. Um, again, that's why we wait till October first to really sort of lock in the, the enrollment itself and the projections.
Yeah. Yeah, and as we think about, you know, projecting, projecting for next year for budgeting, I think maybe, I don't know, just.
I think we might see a change in the term.
Be a little bit more conservative.
I mean, a great example is, I think a week ago, we may have, um, been even down a student at South and then you just have one more first grader that arrives and now the class average is twenty point three versus twenty. So I mean, it just keeps changing daily.
And there's always a, a significant change in the new year. You know, January, right, coming back from New Year, this.
Right.
You know, certain percentage that are coming and going, so. We manage it continually. Yeah.
District Register's been very busy.
She was still sitting there when we left.
Yes, she was. She's very patient and determined.
Any other questions? All right, great. Uh, all right, next up is the school start and end times update with Dr. Letzey.
Yep, and this is just one of our, uh, our periodic updates, just to let you know. We have scheduled, we've reserved the Wagner Room for our first committee meeting, we'd been talking about that earlier, for October twenty-first. We're looking at nine thirty to eleven o'clock, uh, in the morning on October twenty-first. And the, as we look at the membership for that committee meeting, we're talking, we're looking at certainly the district administrators, our transportation coordinator, our athletic director, Alan, um, who's not here anymore, administrators at each level from each of our buildings. Uh, we're also looking for representation from our teachers, uh, at each of the levels, the high school, middle school, elementaries, uh, representation from our, um, different groups that we have, so our teaching assistants, secretaries, others. Also looking at parents from, we're talking with the PTCs about two parents from each of the elementary schools, uh, two parents from the lower division, two from the upper division at Saks, four parents from the high school. And then looking at representation from the town council, um, perhaps from the Board of Finance as well. And then from our community groups, the YMCA, Parks and Recs, uh, looking at the SROs at our schools. So really working to have a wide representation, um, somebody from the Chamber of Commerce, somebody from New Canaan Cares, um, so that, and then we're also going to invite a few folks who, for the last year or so, have expressed an interest in this. Uh, you know, they've stepped forward to communicate with the Board of Ed, to speak at a meeting, to, you know, be a part of things. Because what we really want to do is have a wide-ranging committee that's led by a facilitator who's worked with our district before, uh, in order to sort of build a baseline understanding of why we do what we do and then look at what the scenario is that's being presented and, and have a brainstorming session as well. You know, this is, uh, at no time did the, the Board of Education or the administration say, "This is the plan." Um, we've really been focusing, saying, "This is a scenario to develop further and see what grows from that." Uh, and so we continue to do that and continue to, uh, try to work this through. Those numbers are, are tricky, you know, when you're at three hundred and eleven kindergartners and you're routing them all in the first time in the buses and we're asking our transportation department to reroute them in a different way at a different time. But he's doing, he's continuing to do that work. Uh, and, you know, we're still trying to work through our challenge of, um, well, yeah, of, well, yeah, our challenge of trying to keep 9:05 the latest start time for any one of our schools, but have 7:45 the earliest start time. So essentially, sort of working within the window that we currently have, but shaving 15 minutes off in the morning. And that's a challenge, but we're still trying to figure out all the logistics of that, and we'll keep doing that. And my anticipation is that by the 21st, we'll have more concrete information to share, you know, with that group, so that we can, again, spend a little time. I do think it's important, and when I speak with districts and people in districts who have done work like this, a step that's often missed is this understanding of what you're doing now and why you're doing what you're doing. They, a lot of times, the people in the room have so much information and knowledge about what's occurred in the past. There's an assumption of knowledge for everybody that's there. And I think that, so by hearing that feedback from some folks we've talked to, we'll avoid that step. We'll make sure that everyone in the room starts with a common baseline understanding. And then we can step forward from there and look at this scenario and talk through pros and cons. We have, you know, we continue to receive emails, I know the board does, I do, from folks urging change and urging caution and, you know, everything in between. And that's good. We should be hearing from people in order to help inform our conversation and deliberation. Ultimately, as you know, the focus group we've also, or committee, we've reserved the Wagner Room for two other days, if need be, so that it's not, you know, if one meeting gets us to where we feel we need to be, great. If not, we have the room reserved, we have the facilitators set up, and we have other dates for more flexibility as well. Their conversation and their goal will be to serve an advisory capacity to the board. So all of that information will be recorded. It'll be, there'll be open meetings. And we have the good fortune of being able to record meetings that we have right here, so we've got to do that. For anybody who's not able to make it but wants to know sort of what was happening, certainly, we want to be as clear and open about all of this as we can be. And that's our goal. So we're sort of working on all the fine details around that, but that's our plan with that piece of the communication. And we're still doing the sort of logistical work with our Transportation Department. Right.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? I just had one, which is, in terms of the education and setup for that meeting on the 21st, are you going to, you know, provide, whether it's like routing details or things like that, to the people participating in advance? Or are you planning to do sort of a, like an upfront education session to begin the meeting?
You know, I think that in advance, folks that are invited will have more information in advance about why we're having the conversation at all.
Right.
Right. And sort of some research around districts that have made some change, some other, some things around, sort of the bigger picture of why. But the finer details, I think, will need some explanation.
Yep.
You know, again, I don't want to fall in that trap of thinking that everyone knows what we know.
Right.
Because we've been living it for so long. So I think those details will want to walk people through. We'll do it as quickly as we can, because the idea will be open communication with people. But we will have a packet of information that goes out in advance about the why. Why are we having this conversation?
Right. Okay. That makes sense. Questions? Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up are...
I want to just go back real quick to the budget.
Sure.
Because as we were talking, some people looked some things up for us, just to be sure.
Sure.
I'd said that we had anticipated going down three in the elementary. It looks like we had anticipated going down one for the elementary. We had the one budget, what do we call it, variability adjustment, that we didn't know where it would be, but we assumed it would be somewhere. We reduced two other teachers at Saks.
Right, that's where...
The five to six. And that's where the three number comes from.
Right.
But in the elementary, we anticipated reducing one, and we're at, we're flat, year to year. Although we did, does the year to year include preschool?
No.
So actually, we are up one. So it's a net two instead of a net three. Because we thought we'd go down one. But we are the same overall. But we had to add a preschool teacher. So it's a net two.
It's actually...
And not a section at...
Isn't it from an FTE standpoint, net four more than what we expected?
No.
Is that not right?
No, we were going down one at East, two at South. So those two launched. And then we took West's plan, and then we took a variability adjustment of one as a net. So that's minus one.
Okay. I got it.
And the Hispanic is flat year to year, so it's a minus one. While there's a preschool is not anticipated.
Right.
So that's another.
A plus one.
So it's a plus, it's a two FTE differential.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right.
That makes sense. All right.
Okay. Just want to be clear on that one.
Yeah, thank you.
It's important.
That's helpful. Okay.
If you want me to be clearer after the meeting, I'm glad to, glad to do that. Okay.
Next are action items. First up are the district goals and objectives, second read. Any discussion on this?
So we went and made the changes based on our conversation, worked with the language a little bit, and clarified, you know, in one place, really, objective one F really zeroed in on the question in, question at hand. And I think, and I, again, appreciate all the feedback. I think it helped to improve and to narrow the focus where appropriate. Keep going. You heard Alan in his presentation talking about being multi-year. And that's a good example, just right there, page three, it's goal one, objective eight. You know, now it's to begin the revisions on that work. So he's got things just started on his timeline. It's to continue doing that work and continue with that model and with those goals. That'll be there for a while, as, you know, based on the complexity of the program.
Okay. Does anyone have questions, comments? Okay. So are we voting now on this?
Yes, it's for second.
Yeah. So can I have a motion to approve as a second? Sorry, we just vote. All right.
All those in favor.
Sounds good. All those in favor?
Second.
Katrina? Great. Thank you. All right. Next is the schedule of our Board of Education meetings for 2020, also second read. Any, were there any changes to this?
Nope. We...
I look like, I thought the dates, am I the only one that, like, when I was entering?
Did the dates change a little bit?
In one of the months. Maybe I just had me there wrong.
So there's a couple of months that, like, March is tricky, because there are five Mondays?
Yeah, I think it was more like September, the dates, did they shift from, I mean, I'm fine, I had them in my calendar. I just wanted to make sure that they...
Yep, September 8th would be...
I just had to move them from one, I had entered them in the calendar. And then when I saw this, I had to move a couple of dates in one month.
Well, certainly, we can look at it just to be sure.
I mean, I'm fine with the dates.
Well, while in advance, if it has to change.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with any of the dates, so it's not, it's not that. I just wanted to make sure.
It looks like, yep, September 8th is the Tuesday after Labor Day, and the 21st is...
Yeah, I had a whole bunch of them. Whatever it's for. Yeah, I think it was September. I think it was the September dates that were off or something.
They changed.
Yeah. Because we were supposed to go, that, it was, it was, it was the Memorial Day. I thought we were a week...
The Labor Day?
Labor Day, sorry.
Okay.
I'm totally fine with the dates. I just think that they were in a different...
So you think the first read, they were a little different than they are now?
Mm-hmm.
But as you look at them now, you feel confident that...
I have no problem with the dates.
These are, these are where we want to be. Okay.
Right, September 29th, late, our 20.
Yeah, and the 21st in January is after Martin Luther King Day. And then, of course, in February, we have our February break and all of what that does. And then when you get into March, it is, it goes the 2nd and the 4th, because it's the five weeks and because of what happens in February. So, okay. Well, if there's more...
Makes sense.
Yeah. I'm willing to...
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. All right. Thank you. Great. All right. Any comments from the public? Okay. Next is announcements and future business. Dr. Letzey.
Sure. So briefly, our, as we just mentioned earlier, our new teacher orientation begins tomorrow morning. So we'll have our new staff from across the district here, and they begin a three-day experience as they become acclimated to New Canaan and learn about our school system and the values and beliefs and mission that we have here. Once again, our principals, our building-level staff did a great job identifying talent and bringing on board. And it's our first summer for Ms. Bianca as our head of human resources there. So she's met with all of our new teachers coming in and sort of got to know them, and they got to know her, and excellent representative for our school. Get this underway tomorrow morning. The following Monday, on the 26th, we have our convocation. So as we have in the past, we'll have 600-plus folks in the cafeteria downstairs. We'll start at 8 o'clock in the morning and usher in the new year, say a few words. Vivian Birdsall will say a few words, and Bren will say a few words, and as will Kevin Monahan. And, you know, I'll get, I'll wrap things up. It'll be a nice morning. We have two days of professional learning after that. And then on the 29th, our students come back. It's, you know, it's funny how the slower you want time to go, the quicker it does. And I think our kids are probably all experiencing that these next few days. So I hope that everyone enjoys the rest of the summer and comes in ready to go.
Great. Thank you.
Very exciting.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Deanna, second. Penny, all those in favor? Thank you.